Okay, I'm gonna open this meeting at being just slightly after 7:30. Let everybody know this meeting is being recorded. So we do have a public hearing continuation at 8:00 P.M., so I'm gonna try to take care of some of our other items leading up to that. Chris, you're gonna do the motions?
Sure, I got it.
Why don't we do a motion for the minutes of April 19th? Do you have that?
Mr. Pierce, I move that we accept the minutes of April 19th, 2022, as written.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second. Any comments, questions, or corrections? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The record show four in favor, no opposed. Warren is not with us this evening.
Mr. Pierce? I'm sorry, it's been a while since we've had a crowd. If anyone's here for the A and R, we'd like for them to sign in.
Yeah, you can do that. You pass it around. That's that first.
Anyone's here for the A and R? People who don't quite agree with you?
Well, anybody can. Anybody here can sign in.
Yeah, right here is a good sign.
Any? Anybody can sign in between president and president.
Right.
All right. I think what I'd like to do, well, let's do this bond release for Grand Legacy. Has everybody read through that?
Yep.
Any issues, any questions on it?
No.
All right, go ahead, Chris.
Mr. Pierce, I move that Community Planning Commission vote to accept the April 13th, 2022 report from Design Consultants Incorporated and that the amount of $264,638.98 be established as sufficient to ensure the completion of the John.
No, that's not John Beckford.
It is Grand Legacy.
Yes.
Grand Legacy.
Grand Legacy subdivision.
Do you have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. So I have a motion, a second. Any questions on any of it? Have you read through it? Comments? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Jeremiah, did you say that?
Yes, Jeremiah said yes. Opposed, how here and done. Let the record show four in favor, no opposed. So why don't you, you might as well do the 78 Havel Street, 135 Chestnut Street, A and R. Is there proponent for that here tonight?
Oh.
Well, Peter, it's you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Ogan, and I'm with Hays Engineering, and I'm here with McCollus, who presented the approval not required plan to the North Running Planning Board.
Peter, could you go down to the microphone so the, we can hear you just fine, but the people at home?
At home, Carrie.
So major production. My name is Peter Ogan, and I'm with Hays Engineering, and I'm here with McCollus, who presented a, an A and R plan to the North Running Planning Board for signature. I had gone over it briefly with Danielle, and I had indicated that I would bring some charts to kind of further show the board what's being done here. It's a little complicated, and there are a couple of titles here. I think I have just enough.
Thank you.
I'd like Danielle to have one, too.
Thank you.
There you go. So as I said, there are two titles here. They're in the family, but, but under a different name, and as such, they need to be handled as separate parcels as far as the deeds are concerned. So the first chart that I gave you shows the two separate titles. One of them is in Mr. McCollus' name as trustee, and the other is wife. The, the pink one is in Mr. McCollus' name as trustee, and the green one is in his wife's name. What is being proposed is to subdivide this on an A and R basis into four lots, and the next chart shows you how those four lots would be. Those are the orange lines. Two of the lots are reduced frontage lots that are allowed under your bylaw, and two of them are standard lots. There is one common note on the plan over on the right-hand side, which takes a portion of the McCollus plan and adds it to the, the wife's land in order to create a limited frontage lot of two, two parcels from the, the husband's piece. I think that kind of explains what we're doing. The only other aspect of the plan is, I think, important as far as the board is concerned is that we would like to, to keep the right to have a common drive off of Havel Street for the, the standard frontage lot and the existing dwelling. It's anticipated that that money will go to a family member, and the common drive would work out well, well for them. So we've indicated on the plan that there's a easement for, proposed easement for a, a common drive in that first panhandle of land, which is the reduced frontage lot with the existing dwelling on it. The existing dwelling is designed to remain where it is, and the existing septic system is designed to remain where it is, although I understand your regulations require a 120-foot diameter circle. We have shown that on the plan, but it's anticipated that the house stays where it is, the septic system stays where it is. There's actually another old structure on the, on the parcel, too, that will, will remain.
And that's 250, 250 circle.
What's that?
250 foot circle.
Ah, yeah. What did I say, 250?
125, yeah.
250 foot circle.
It's right there. It's on the, it's on the drawing.
Yes. I believe Danielle has the mylar, right?
We do.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, the common driveway, the, or that 50-foot right-of-way, not terribly in favor of common driveways. There appears to be enough room there you could give individual driveways. Is there any reason you didn't, other than perhaps a conservation situation?
There is. I think that, uh, there's a very minor wetland at the very front, and that's one reason for perhaps being desirous of a common drive. But if the lot stays in the family, or at least as long as it stays in the family, I think a common drive is probably desirable. I understand what you're saying, and we're all homie tenants here, I understand that too. So that sometime it won't be in the family, and maybe a, a common drive will be applied for it. But for right now, they could access it from that one drive.
Yeah, I've already seen the result of one where it was fine 20 years ago when it was done, but then when everybody changed hands, suddenly, who plows it? How come you didn't plow it?
Exactly.
Well, you're supposed to plow it.
I understand that, and I've talked to Mr. McCollus about that and said that if we keep it as a common drive, why, I said in my presentation that we wanted the option to do that, if we keep it as a common drive, and it does get sold off, he, he needs to be sure that they work out a common drive plan that indicates how the cost will be shared, and who will do what, and so forth. I mean, I think common drives can work, but I understand that they can also be a basis for some, some use.
So, if I may misperuse. Peter, on that 50-foot easement, is there room to put two driveways right next to each other?
Yeah, there is.
That's, that's my question, because I think he was talking about the wetlands in the front of that property. I don't see any wetlands in that 50-foot right-of-way.
Well, there's no wetlands in the 50-foot right-of-way.
You understand what I'm saying about putting the, putting the right side by side and putting some buffer, or put a drain in between them? We've done that. We did that on Havel Street. I grew up on a common drive with my grandparents. Everything was great until my cousins moved in, and then it was, it was terrible. So family doesn't matter, okay? I wasn't living there at the time, but it was, it was really a horror show for my parents. So common drives can work, but they also don't always work.
Well, we could, we could put two drives there, but still would it involve a permit from Conservation to act within the 12-foot buffer zone that they have, or have fill?
Well, you have the option of doing some amount of filling there, too, for access, so I, I think that perhaps the, the.
It's empty.
That's a discretion, and something the better part would be to put, put the two driveways in here, not ever, not ever introduce that issue to anybody that lives there.
Well, we can fit two driveways of the required width in the 50-foot. If we were to do that, I think we'd probably want to separate them as soon as possible, because I think it looks kind of funny, but, you know.
There's also gonna be, there's also gonna be some kind of an easement granted to that lot for that driveway as well.
There would be. There looks like a driveway easement is there already, or they're proposing one.
They're suggesting a driveway easement.
Right, right.
50-foot.
It's not there yet.
No, but they own the property, so it's easy to, for the owners today, put that easement in. It's not like you've got to go begging to somebody else to do it.
That's correct.
Today, today's the right time to do it before you build it.
Right, right.
I just think a second driveway, it takes away any of those headaches, you know, and who says what the driveway has to be made of, right? Warren, we don't have a, we don't have a specification on that, so.
Yeah. Well, I don't think anybody would be interested in gravel at this point, not, not with the length of it yet.
Yeah.
You're gonna want to have a real driveway there, so.
Mr. McCollus, do you have any thoughts on that, is to have two driveways in the panhandle?
I don't know. I have no objection to having two. It's the best.
Yeah. And this is, you know, I understand today's family may work. My, my, my father and mother and my grandparents were fine. When that house moved to my other part of the family, just didn't work out. It's not worth it.
Yeah. Hey, anybody else? Dave, is anything?
Trying to find anything to plug up, but I, I mean, other than what you guys went over.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question about the frontage driveway?
Um, this isn't necessarily a public hearing, but I'll take a couple of questions just in the interest of knowledge. What was you have? And please say your name.
My name's C.O.E.D. I live at 76 Havel.
Yeah.
When you talked about putting two driveways there side by side, that was in the 50 feet?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Yes, no. Within the 50 feet.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yeah.
Is there any way you can talk into that other mic?
Right there.
Sorry.
They'll hear you on TV.
I think the answer to your question is, is yes, they'll both fit in just fine. So they have to hold up, retain the 50 feet for that parcel, though, correct, to have the minimum frontage?
They have to.
Have 50 feet of minimum frontage?
No, well, yeah, that, that, there is 50 feet. It was already there.
Right, but if you put two sideways, driveway side by side, are you then splitting the land and giving some to the other?
No, no.
Okay.
No, there's no splitting of the land. What happens is the driveway, the, the main driveway will go to the, the lot in the back there, and the lot in the front there will have its own driveway that comes up, and an easement will be granted to that particular lot from this lot to allow them to keep the driveway there.
Okay, thank you. That wasn't my question.
Yep, that's, that's how it works. Okay. All right, any, Nadia, any else? You guys all set?
None at all.
So.
Mr. Chairman, just a question on the, on this 250 circle. Can, is it typically you would have the building and septic inside that 250?
Typically.
So the case of that lot where you have the existing structure?
The existing structure, yeah.
And not inside that? What is?
Well, typically, the idea is to have the property in the upland section of it.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, we've, if it was a subdivision, which has a little different set of rules there, we would in fact have to have everything inside that, and it would have to be all upland, or enough upland in order to put the.
The house.
House and septic and whatever else needs to be there. So, um, we don't have that same restriction here if it was simply creating the lot.
Don't exactly.
You all set, Danielle?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Hayden, if you would.
Mr. Pierce, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to endorse, as approval not required, the plan entitled Plan of Land in North Running Mass dated May 5, 2022, drawn by Hays Engineering Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Let the record show four in favor, no opposed, and Mr. Carroll is absent from here. Thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you.
If you're certainly willing to stay for the rest of the meeting. Peter, you got something?
Thank you very much. Good to see you all again.
Yep, yeah.
When do we pick up the bylaw? I mean, we'll need to wait for the board to sign it now, but.
Oh, Alan, do you want to pick, do you want to do the signatures now?
No.
Did they do it?
I don't, we don't need to.
We can either do it now or do it after, Peter. Be ready tomorrow, right?
Yeah, we will be ready tomorrow. We'll sign it tonight.
Because the driveway is a very part of the plan.
Yeah. Be ready tomorrow, right, Debbie?
What?
The mylar, everything will be ready for.
I have, I have the mylar if you want to sign.
Yeah. We don't have to do it now, though. It should have to be right now.
Well, usually do.
We can.
We have plenty of time.
Yeah, we have time. We have time, Peter. Take the seat. Yeah, we got 13 minutes before our public.
All the next one, okay.
So if you get signed mylar and a couple drawings in that little amount of time, we gotta go back to school.
Yeah. I've been practicing for years, Peter. I can do it now. How much is the volume you've been covering? She got a lighter or something?
Oh, that one's not working.
You're all wet.
Okay, it's been a while.
Oh, dry, yeah.
So, you know, you need to turn it upside down to let, let all the alcohol run out of
It will be at least. Kind of works. Kind of like that. The property. So, put it down the other mylar.
Okay, well, while we're on, I'll sign that. Do we have something here from, from the Forest Committee?
Oh, um, yes. Is someone here from the Forest Committee? Yes. Uh, Forest Committee, hi. Are you here to talk about the Forest Committee item, or? Oh, you both, okay.
Forest Committee.
Oh, terrific, okay, great. Did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, we'll go. You got 10 minutes. And then they can go home.
No, 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 we're just, just doing some.
How many trees did you kill?
This year.
You share the septic with us on our, our contract, or?
Excellent.
Come on now. So it's in my house.
Yeah, just give me a minute. Are you okay?
So, just briefly, you don't know if you have to vote in a certain, but on the board will be a request for a, we're gonna hire a consultant to help us out with the Swan Pond. I'm not sure if CPC has the numbers or not, but we wanted to make you aware of what we're doing. So this is kind of courtesy of the office, so to say. Let me introduce you to the one of three members on the Forest Committee, Dr. Allison Palino. She just recently got a doctorate, so very popular. This is her first time doing this, so I come down as a moral support, but she doesn't need moral support. She needs me to lead her on, so.
More support appreciated.
So she's leaving, uh, she's, you handed out some slides for you to look at, see what's going on.
Yeah, this should hopefully be very quick. What we're looking for is hopefully pretty straightforward. So our interest is in the Swan Pond Forest area. It's an area that was noted to be of interest by the community in the Open Space Recreation Plan of 2020. So we do have some public support for a project here, or improvements here. And there is historically some stewardship by the Forest Committee. We don't own any of the land. It's owned by the general government, it's owned by the Conservation Commission and the school committee, but in the recent history anyway, the Forest Committee has kind of overseen projects in this area. You may or may not remember the Forest Tree Cutting Program that was done in like early 2000s or early 2010s. Not with this project is, but just, you know, showing that we have done work in this area before. Currently, the Swan Pond Forest area is very underutilized. A lot of people don't even know it exists. I didn't know it existed until I joined the Forest Committee, and my book said there were three advocateers. And this lack of awareness does come with some issues. So if you walk through there, you can see that people dump trash there, especially, you know, after the holidays, you can see all Christmas trees, which is okay, I guess, but other trash as well. There are a lot of unauthorized motorized vehicles going through there, like ATVs that are really tearing up the, the area. And you can see trash bottle, um, sorry, like ear bottles that people leave out with air drinking in there. And there's not enough parking spaces for people who do know about it. They can't really access it. There's the one road, and it's kind of parked on the side, but it's not really great or safe. And along those lines, there's no real fire or safety access should be needed. So I'm hoping to increase awareness. First off, it's town-owned land. It would be great if the public knew more about it. And we are hoping to increase public use, but in a more controlled manner. And towards this effort, we're hoping to hire a professional consultant. We looked into kind of doing this ourselves and realized it was a little, we were a little out of our depth to really assess the terrain. So we're hoping to really identify the land boundaries between the stakeholders, get a good grasp of who owns exactly which sections. We also want to make sure that we're staying well clear of the butters. And we're also looking into the trail system that's in place. And part of that reason is we're hoping to improve some of these trails, especially increase trail accessibility, widening trails and making the surface of that like wheelchairs to access it. And, yeah, just make it more accessible to the whole town. And so the consultant that we're hiring, we're hoping that they will give us formal conceptual plans. We had a lot of interest from local scouting groups, old boy and girl scouts, that were ready to jump right in and help, but we don't have a great idea of what exactly needs to be done yet. And we've also reached out to Essex Agricultural School, and they would be interested in taking on some projects, some maintenance projects for their forestry students. But again, we have to have the designs, the formal designs in place already for them to go off of. So in order to hire a consultant, we looked around and found that we needed about, up to $65,000 in order to hire a consultant. And so that would be just to assess the current trail system in the Swan Pond Forest area and provide conceptual plans for trail improvement. So it's not actually to do any work, but rather just to understand what we have and how we can get better for the town.
I'll just damp, there's three, you know, we're talking about three stakeholders in this. It's the Conservation Commission, it's the school, the school zone part of land, and then the town part of land. So part of them happening is to be sure that everything's being delineated, and we're not stepping on anybody's toes or doing anything we haven't done before. So that's the main goal. And then, yeah, you already mentioned Essex Ag. So the point is, is that, you know, we're obviously at some point, we've produced materials to assign, which claims of that nature, but beyond that, we're looking to get, actually, this is a natural thing that happens. Once people get interested in understanding what we're doing, it's very natural to get support from the community, and it turns into a friends of type situation. But Swan Pond, again, I, myself, I didn't know until I got on the Forest Committee what Swan Pond is even about. Dana Rowe, who's the chair of that committee, walked me through this beautiful area, you know, with just a little bit of improvement, we can make it, you know, a really pristine area for the town, but also make it professional and make it accessible for many people that don't exist now. So that's a request to get out an OPD to vote for it. I'd like to take questions. Would there be like?
I just wondered about a couple things. The cutting program, is it still active?
Yeah, the economics of the forest, that's been on hold, so they've done two of the three parts. There is another part that needs to happen, but right now, the economics of doing that does not, because we don't have a big budget for that, so.
And it would require, I think, another vote at this point, like the.
They have to reapproach the state to spec it up.
Yeah.
So one of the, one of the things, one of the issues that comes to mind is if you get a lot of brushing everything up here, and if you don't do some kind of cleanup, forest fire will roll through there, and if you've got, if you look at things like all the warming and drying out of the, of that forest, there's, you know, there's increased danger. You don't get the understudy out of there in some cases and get a.
And that fire safety is definitely one of the reasons for doing this. We had a lot of interest from the scouts to do trail maintenance, and we realized we don't even have a map of our trails, like to give them to do maintenance.
Well, I think Essex Ag is really probably a good, a good fit, because I'm sure that, first of all, they have students that are in the forestry program, and if you could take advantage of as much as possible, they're interested in, and perhaps even some expertise from the instructors there to get you, to get you forward, or moving forward, regardless if, if the funding comes through or not, you know.
So Dana Rowe actually is an alumnus of them, their program, and he reached out to them, and they said they would need formal plans, that they don't do the planning portion of it. So there's, at least we need a little bit of a plan in place before they would do anything in that area for, or to help us.
Well, the other, the other thing that comes to mind would be our GIS system that can provide you with some overheads and some, perhaps some mapping of some of the trails, which would give you an opportunity to get something done, should you not succeed with the funding.
He reached out to Mr.
Yeah, he just started with a new person in town, I guess.
It starts with a B, I apologize, I can't pronounce it.
Michael.
Yes.
Oh, there you go. You've known, yeah.
His last name I.
Apparently he has a long list. Things is good, so.
Like easy, I think.
So hoping by the town that you're going to have at least an overview of what looks at our area.
I'm gonna hazard a guess.
You may not get more detailed than that.
I'm gonna hazard a guess, most of the trails near are either animal or kids just walking through.
Or.
Or motorcycles.
ATVs, yeah, they have been going up in there.
They're bikes and motorcycles. Because I do live on Swan Pond Road, but I don't need a cemetery.
Oh, there you go.
And we have many people that walk up there from, from our house.
Yeah. So.
So question on the, on the 65, how much of that is for property line survey or doing topo of the 65, Rich? How many acres, how many acres is the Swan Pond?
It was in two parts. And, and by the way, we, it was a long search to find consultants who actually do this.
Yes.
And it was really hard for us to find somebody who actually does this. So we find, we found one out of K-Top. Of course, we've built the, the trail process of doing a.
Did you contact the?
Master, yeah. Oh, yeah, we went through.
The Government Foundation, we tried calling some towns that have done similar work to get their consultant.
Right.
Word of mouth or other consultants, and everyone either, their plates were full, or a lot of times there were requirements we couldn't leave, like either included more than one town, or was a mode of transportation, you talk about that kind of thing. So a lot of this stuff could be qualified for.
But Rich, that's, you know, without having to look it up, but that's kind of what you need to do, or what the write-up was, you need to find those property lines, understand where they are, right? And you guys, I know the cutoff for mass trails is Monday for the grants for this year. Would that be something that you try to do for 2023, I guess? Would that be something that you try to do for 2023, I guess? Because.
We didn't qualify for any of their grants. That, that was the issue.
And for what reason, though?
For either one, the size of the project, the scope of the project, like the criteria, yeah, I spoke with someone at length, and we just, at the moment, don't qualify.
It's interesting, too, because you should probably follow up on it, because looking, I just read through all 52 of the grants from last year, and they, there's at least one third of them that fit exactly the description of what we're trying to do. We're trying to do planning, weight finding, development, survey, engineering, and they're, if you read the grants, I can send you, Rich, the PDF, I have your email. I listed them all. So it seems, and they're not big, you know, it's 18 grand with a match of three or something like that, if the scope is 2.5 or something like, you know, it's not, they're not huge, but they do give up to, as it says here, $300,000, but, you know, they help make you that all the time. But most of them are very small, which would be in your wheelhouse and maybe not funded all, but a lot of it, so we should try to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we did contact them.
I'm just wondering if, Mr. Chairman, if there's like any, any one of our reps or whatever could help me, maybe the way that we're pitching what we're trying to do.
Crushing the.
Say the magic word, yeah. So I don't know. But that's, that's also, that's great. Love hiking, love trails, so it's already there.
So what is one of the issues, it sounds to me like the focus on delineating the lines so that we, so you, will you not be able to do trails of things that are on, for example, the school committee land?
So historically, I think they've been pretty amenable to what the Forest Committee has wanted to do, like the, the cutting project, everyone's amenable to that. I think it would depend on the size of the project. I mean, one of the things we had talked about that is not finalized and not really part of this is, you know, would we be able to build a parking lot somewhere? And that might have to be a bigger discussion with each of the stakeholders, because potentially one of them might not want it.
In other words, you probably might have to limit your construction of anything like that to town-owned land, where the town could say okay, as opposed to having to go through the school department or any private, any of the private owners' properties.
So we have, we have extended, you know, the same offer to the school committee, come meet with them to discuss this and also, well, the site board is already here, so they're good, and the conservation committee, yeah. And so we're gonna meet with them in a week or two. But yeah, once we have that spec, then we're gonna obviously go back formalizing.
My, I thought it was probably that conservation is probably gonna be a little difficult because they don't want you disturbing their wetland areas. And so I suppose delineating what belongs to them and working around it probably is a necessary, necessary evil, if you will.
I think if they take, they will, when they take a walk with us and see what's going on with no supervision, they're gonna realize that we're actually gonna help if not. So I would suggest, you know, if that's necessary.
At the moment, this particular project is really just information gathering and design planning, like obviously if we did any next steps, we would have to go back to all of these stakeholders.
Okay, this is, this is something we would necessarily take a vote on, but I could certainly get a consensus to support this, to undermine.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, actually, before we bought our current house, we looked at a property in that area and traveling through some of those roads and everything, I was like, I don't even feel comfortable owning a property in this area.
Yeah, you're back in the back 40 there.
Yeah, yeah. And it felt like a little kind of forgotten part of them. And so maybe that's it for us, to put a little organization around it, just working with it.
Dave, how about you?
I'll definitely, very supportive.
Okay, here's me, too. Yeah, and I'd say yes, too. I mean, in my younger days, I spent a lot of time up there in the dirt bike, so I know you're.
He made a lot of those trails, I'm sure.
Just dirt bike?
They didn't have ATVs back when he was running.
Yeah, it's the dirt bike, so. So thank you very much for coming. If you can share that with us, you have a consensus from us that we would support this, so that should, that'll help out. And if we get a chance, I'll, I'll talk to some of the policies, see what we can find out.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Anybody who wants a tour, but just ask Dana, I'd be glad to take one.
He's so knowledgeable, not the area.
Don't worry, we've dealt a lot with Dana.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, let's go a couple, 14 coffee.
Well, hello.
Ms. Man, how are you?
Very well, and you?
Great.
Great. So I, we received comments from the traffic part of the review, and I had sent you a response that we had from GPI, but I brought intentionally a whole bunch of copies.
Okay.
I didn't know.
Sometimes when I upload it here at the meeting, it doesn't, it's not viewable to everyone.
So I basically have provided for you a response from our traffic engineer relative to the G2 comment letter that we received yesterday. Obviously, we were able to respond pretty quickly because there were very few comments, you know, of any true magnitude. And it's bid by name, I'm just going to go quickly through it and then turn it over to Luke to address the comments from, from G2 relative to zoning, site, and then stormwater. So basically, as you can see from the G2 report, they basically concur that the traffic is, traffic report is accurate, that the site is able to be accessed safely. And then what G2 had asked for is some modifications or clarifications, I should say, and that's all that's really provided in this report. You know, they asked about the traffic counts, basically, you know, did you adjust them seasonally? And when we took the counts, we took them Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but we didn't take them to establish the volume of traffic, we did it to establish the rate of speed, which was why it's actually better if you take them on a Saturday, because people tend to go faster than. But that was all explained and responded to in the first comment to G2. And then the second comment was simply, again, just kind of depicting the traffic counts. Yeah, yeah, so one and two are both the same. Collision, crash history, it was just a confirmation on the site distance. So this was, if you remember, and I think the board asked a few questions about this, about how we were going to handle site distance, and Rebecca answered that, and then you were waiting to see what your response was from your traffic engineer. And the site mitigation measures that were suggested by GPI were actually endorsed by your, your peer consultant. And then they just asked for us to provide more details, like where are you gonna move that sign? Remember how we had said that there's a sign, and people probably think it's a 35 mile an hour speed limit, because the sign is literally behind a group of trees? She just showed where we're gonna relocate that sign, which is a 30 mile an hour speed limit, I mean, yes, 30. And then she did also, she being Rebecca Brown from GPI, provided in the package that you have, and this is something this entire board said was a good idea, the repainting of those, the lines and the streets to be able to include site distance. So she just provided a plan of that. And you know what I did do? Because I personally am too old to be able to see it, I couldn't, I could not read the plan. I had a zoom on my computer, so what I did was I zoomed for you and then printed, oh, you're looking right now, Mr. Pierce, aren't you? I zoomed and then printed out the zoom so that I could actually see it.
Why don't you look at the computer, please?
Oh my gosh, you should see the size, I have to make the computer screen, it's embarrassing.
You've got to start wearing glasses, then.
I do wear glasses, it's like they don't even work anymore.
Well, you can get glasses from the computer, which are bigger. I haven't said a little.
Yeah, I wanna say I'm 29 twice, anyhow. So that, I provided that for you. And in general, I know you have to read it, I'm not trying to rush you through that, but in general, the traffic report really was simply confirmed and accepted by, by G2. And again, your suggestions were also recommended by G2. And unless you have specific questions about that, I'm going to turn it over to Luke to go through those comments that we did receive from G2 relative to the site plan, stormwater, and then I think Luke also addressed the comments that the planner had, and the fire department, as well as the police department, too, because we talked about items that are a whole bunch of stuff Luke responded to. So he's just gonna show you some of the modifications that we made, it's really some notes on the plan, there really weren't any changes necessitated by any of the comments. So, Luke?
There you go, thanks, Jill. Yeah, so the comments that we received from G2 as far as the site, site plan review, were mainly having to do with informational, providing more detail on, on some things. If that's all right, that answers it. There wasn't a whole lot of comments that really changed the layout of the site or relocated things that we had to address. There was some things like adding a 50-foot wetland buffer to the plan, looking at identifying the model of a stormwater treatment unit, and being more specific in detail on that. There was a comment having to do with the ADA accessible route to each of the buildings, and just clarifying, basically added some additional spot grades, just to make it clear that we're conforming to those requirements for sloping and the accessible, not only the spaces, but the aisles and the routes to the buildings. There was a number of things, items in the stormwater report that just required some additional detail, having to do with the test pit log reference, sediment four bay volume calculations, we just added some additional area information so that that, those volumes were clear. And that was in our response letter. TSS removal calculations, again, was something that was a detail item in the, one of the appendices of the stormwater report. Pipe size and calculations and groundwater bounding analysis. All of these things are now included in the, or further detailed really, in the revised stormwater report that we submitted. And the operation and maintenance plan, again, so the majority of their comments had to do with detail in the stormwater report, which we provided. On the cover sheet, there was a couple of things just having to do with zoning, making it clear as far as this block, this site, and the setback requirements. Correcting a note, adding some additional clarification on the screening and the fuel tank location relative to the aquifer protection district boundary. And one of the comments with the fire department, and we did meet with the fire department and talked about fire hydrant locations internal to the site, so we're proposing actually two hydrants, one in this location here, and one over here. And that basically meets the requirement as far as 500 feet in between and the distance to each of the buildings and the requirements that they were asking for. And lastly, we provided a, basically the fire truck maneuvering, it's a separate attachment that we submitted, just showing the fire truck apparatus turning movement, like a sweat path through the site, like for building A coming through. And if, this one's very clear where it can maneuver easily through the site. The back building, and when we met with the fighter department, we talked to them about how that would be more of a pull, a T-turn, where they pull in and back out. They just wanted to see that shown on that maneuvering diagram, how that would be achieved. So, so we've submitted that. And that's really the summary on the, on the changes we've made. I have the full revised set here, obviously the colored grading and drainage plan, but if there's any other questions at this point that the commission has, happy to answer those.
And so you've, you've just recently submitted this change, this plan, then with all the changes on it? All the updates?
Just yesterday, yeah, right.
So it's up for review, so.
Yeah, so we received a review, I think it was like a week or so prior to that. Got the revisions done as fast as we could. Submitted them yesterday, and we wanted to at least take the opportunity to update the board on where we're at with the reviews we received and our responses. And also receiving the traffic review, we just responding to that today, obviously, so.
So the infamous dumpster, is that building B that that's, they're talking about, conservation picking up, right? That they was close to the stormwater basin?
Uh, that was.
What was that?
See, that was G2, that was a comment they had that.
That's back there next to the stone, the basin?
Right. And I looked at like where the parking layout was, and I just didn't, I think this is a good location in a lot of ways, and I didn't see another feasible location.
I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah.
You know, I just wanted to make sure that what I was looking at here, because you don't have it highlighted as on the plan, I might just have just looked at the wrong plan, that's all. Let me see.
That's.
No, yeah.
3.3, comment 3.
Yeah, no, no, I was at the actual plan.
Okay.
I can see him this way. I was looking at the big one.
Okay.
And it's okay, I mean, you know, we have that requirement, it's gonna be a concrete pad. I mean, easily, you can, I know what they're talking, they're worried about, you know, when it rains.
Yeah.
That it's gonna wash into the stormwater without going through treatment.
Right.
You always, you gotta put it on a concrete pad, lift it a little bit, curve it.
Right, and I.
And then just, and then, and then bring it back into the, into the, to the driveway.
Exactly, yeah. That's kind of my response to it, that it's, it'll be pitched towards the.
Pitched towards the driveway, you can curve it, you know, you can do a whole, whole concrete curve, and then you gotta fence around the outside of that.
Yep.
They need to be fenced also to keep the trash from blowing around, hopefully.
Yep.
Because it is, it is terrible, like stuff blows around like crazy, and you can't stop the wind.
Yep.
But I, I mean, I didn't, I just, I wanted to make sure that's what we were.
That's it, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was always looking at the same spot.
It's building B.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Hey, any further questions or comments in the board?
So all the ones that you mentioned, like the fire, the hydrants, and using auto turn to show them truck access, all that, that just submitted back to them? Luke, you're just waiting for them to confirm?
That was just.
But that was the direction you got from fire department or from here?
It's been submitted, it's been returned to G2 for review and to make sure.
The hydrants and the fire, the fire turning was, that was the fire department.
Fire department, okay.
But that was also part of what we just submitted yesterday, so. G2 didn't comment on that.
On that, okay.
That's kind of outside here.
Yeah, and just making sure it's, that's who matters really, is fire department.
Then they must get this new information also right through.
The peer reviewer, I forwarded everything.
Luke, what do you?
The fire department.
Oh, the fire department, oh, yeah, I can, I can send it.
Luke, what do you use in auto turn for a fire truck? What size, or is it just designated as average fire truck? Do they do a ladder-like size?
Well, yeah, they provided.
They provided, they provided you that, right?
Yeah, so the fire department, and they're, I think it's kind of a standard memo.
Yeah, they got a standard memo, yeah.
It's like 42 foot long, like the ladder truck, 10 feet wide, and I picked a vehicle in the, the software that was slightly more than that, it was like 45 feet long, nine and a half wide, pretty close, so it was, it's the closest match that we could.
Okay, so Dana, we probably anticipate a response from this in the next week or so?
Yeah, I would think so. I can prepare a conditional approval for the next.
We are still before the Conservation Commission, so that you know, so we are going to be dependent upon when we get through theirs. I don't know if you want us to wait till we get through that to see if there's any conditional comments or how you want to handle that. So D2 will probably, G2 will probably respond, G2 will probably respond before the cons. I know, I feel like.
I'm coming around to her.
We're going both ways.
Almost.
So G2 probably is gonna respond before we get, before the cons come again, and we get, before the cons come, it's the second Wednesday, Luke said, of the month, so it's June 10th?
Around that, I'm not sure exactly, but.
So we usually, our, if they come out with a negative response, then it doesn't really matter what we.
I don't think that's really, the issue would be, if they, if they required some physical change to the, to the.
To the plan, right.
Yeah, or something that will change the drainage characteristics, where you could have to recalculate, then that, that's going to be the issue, so. So that's a fair question, and probably best if we wait until after your conservation hearing, and if everything looks good, then at our next meeting, we could finish this off.
That's for sure, because we've already responded to DEP's comments, we don't anticipate, you know, having many more things to respond to and.
So when is your, when is your conservation meeting?
It's the second Wednesday?
Second Wednesday is the 8th of June.
I'm not sure.
Is it the 8th?
And, and the filing date for them is the 10th, which is Friday, it's just like us, I'm sure.
Okay.
Gives them a couple of days to get everything together, so if you do it early and you don't have the stuff together, it gets a.
See, we filed already a response with them, so we're just waiting.
We also, yesterday, we submitted revised plan and response letter to Conservation and DEP, so most of their comments were through DEP, and that had to do mostly with the crossing, the wetland crossing. Providing more detailed, like alternative. Providing more detailed like alternatives analysis.
Right.
Some of the information on the, there's a little intermittent stream there and that we're providing it up above Calvert.
Oh, correct.
And all that, so.
Danielle, we're first and third, excuse me.
Right, so this is the...
So we're gonna be the day before they're having theirs.
So the 21st is probably...
The 21st would be...
We are second, yeah.
I think we could, the 22nd would be easy for us to name.
Well, 21st would be ours.
Oh, the 21st, but we're gonna be before that, we're gonna be...
You're gonna be before that on the 8th.
Yep.
Yeah, so I would say if we want to extend this, we could extend it to the 21st or whatever and then, and then you could, and then we could be pretty sure you'll be through everything and that would, and then also give you an opportunity to make any corrections should one be required.
Exactly.
Okay.
That way we can round it all up to the end of June.
Okay.
Very sure.
So, okay, so this is a continued public hearing, is there any comments from the public for this? Hearing done, will continue until, will continue until June 21st?
8:00 PM.
8:00 PM.
8:00 PM.
Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Hare.
I move that community planning commission vote to grant the requested continuance of the public hearing for 14 Concord Street until Tuesday, June 21st at 8:00 PM.
Have a motion, Ryan, second. Okay, David's got a lot to second it, so. Any further questions on that? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. The record show four in favor, no opposed.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in a month.
All right.
Enjoy the weather.
You too.
Chris, do you have the notice for the Dana ready question?
Nope, I never read it actually.
You don't have to, I mean...
We don't have to read that, for sure. But you did not give it to me. I have my motions, maybe you did and I missed it, but I don't think so.
Oh, I'm just looking for it.
Oh, maybe, oh, I do. No, I don't. That's just the, that's the agenda.
Did I give it to someone else?
You did not give it to me.
No, it'll be on your, it'll be in the paper sheet, David.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
You didn't get it either. I think, I think, you know, it's lost, David. You never lose anything.
Okay, we got a couple of ZBA's, so...
Oh, the ZBA's are just kind of FYI because their meeting already happened. We were off schedule, so, yeah.
Okay, so we're not gonna do these ZBA's. So...
So do they have a meeting this week?
They met, when were those? I think last week, I think they met. Yeah.
So, that means we are, we are, okay, we have a planning administrator update left and that's it.
Sure, just a few things, May 24th is the economic development committee's event this year at the horseshoe. Sent out an email invitation, feel free to share it around. We're planning on having a sewer update from the DPW and the town administrator. Then, June 1st is the informational hearings for warrant articles. We don't have an article this time around, but I'll be there just because our budget and because I always go. So if anyone wants to go, that's fine, if not, that's also fine. I saw the list of capital projects today, our central street sidewalk request was not on it, which I wasn't terribly surprised by, but I just wanted to let you know. We can keep asking for it, the town engineer and I will just keep asking for it every year, till, till it happens, I suppose. Let's see, what else? So for the, we were looking at the calendar, it hasn't quite been a full year yet since we did our officer elections and board and liaison assignments. So if we do that on June 21st, that'll be a year, so if that's the night that we would like to do that, I just wanted to mention that. And also wanted to mention that the EDC representative from the CPC is, is among those that, you know, we always, I know Chris always does it, I don't know, Chris, if you want a break this year, I just, it might be...
I'd love a break.
So I just wanted to mention it.
I might submit a meeting as an alternate, but I...
It's short, but it's, it's a lot of words that you're on, so I just wanted to bring it up in case anyone was interested in thinking about that, just to give you plenty of time.
Step aside.
I'm sorry?
I said, they can put their hand up and I'll step aside.
So, just, just to be thinking about it if you're interested in that. The sewer study is ongoing with Kleinfelder, we sent out this week a small study, survey, sorry, to the larger property owners and businesses along Concord and Main, with the survey targeted at them, and then in the next few weeks, we'll be sending out a communication to, to everybody, you know, residents and businesses, to get some more, you know, information out about this.
What are you looking to get from the larger landowners versus the, you know, the average town, if you want, in the room, on route?
Well, so for the landowners, so I say largest, but really it was targeted at any landowner who we really felt could more, you know, be more likely to have potential for their property to be redeveloped or expanded in some way. So some, in some cases there, they might be small properties or really little businesses or very underutilized properties, but we thought, hmm, maybe if there's sewer there, there might really be potential for there to be something else there. So that was sort of, kind of a targeted list, we went through, you know, DPW director and myself and the assessor and the consultant kind of went through and we tried to pick out a set of owners that we could target and we were able to, you know, the consultant called to get in, an email address so that we could get a survey out to them. But they'll be looking at all of the properties and doing a build-out analysis of everything, but we're hoping to get some good input from those who may be inclined to do something more with their properties. So that will be ongoing for the next few weeks. And I saw recently, went to a facilities master plan meeting a few weeks ago and just kind of heard an update on what's happening with, with that project, heard a presentation of, you know, possible, you know, thoughts that they have about the intergenerational community center and also about the fire station. And while we were at that meeting, I saw David Eisen from Advocus who just, you know, we chatted, of course, their, their contract is pretty well over at this point with us, but they have to give us their final report. He's kind of hanging on, hoping that, you know, there would be a time that we would have a, you know, a presentation that he would sort of lead. He said he's definitely willing to do that, he's gonna wrap up the report though, give it to us, and then when we're ready, anytime we're ready to have him come in and do any kind of a presentation, community meeting, whatever it may be, he's happy to come in and do that. So I just wanted to let you know that I, because that project's sort of been hanging out there without resolution, so I just, just wanted to bring that up and that's all that I have.
Yeah, just, the, the intergenerational center, they're, they're kind of talking about keeping it over by the wheel of property there, put it over there, but there are some issues with that, you know, first of all, they have to tear, it's high water table over there and there's also some issues with, they have to tear the barn down. And then that means the parks and rec would have no place to keep their stuff unless the proposal included not just building the intergenerational center, but to, you know, provide some space for parks and rec to keep all their equipment. So there's a bit more to it than, than, than just building an intergenerational center. Obviously, we have the preference that they remove it out someplace close to the main road, but it seems to be following a path right now where everybody says we own the land out there, so let's put it there. And it sounds pretty simple, and so you start to get into the weeds with it and then it's a little more, a little more difficult.
A beautiful site though, for it, isn't it? I don't think?
It's close to the park. Kids can walk to it, so.
It just seems like, we gather pretty well. I guess I don't know or haven't heard all the things that may be occurring, as far as just very high level looking in, I'm, I'm excited about that. In a perfect world, if there was any way to kind of connect the corner of that parcel to that intersection where the new senior zoning that we did is gonna be, that would be a best for your access through that area, like...
They can walk up Hable, they can walk up Hable Street and into the park. It's a little farther walk, but that's what they're going for anyways. They're going for walk, speaking of that sidewalk, a little safer than that zone.
You're very close to that area, it's just, there needs to be a path.
The bridge.
That corner, I think it goes kind of through the wetlands or wherever.
Cross the water.
Be kind of cool. End up the priors, you know? Exactly. Not bad.
Well, as that moves along, I'm on that facilities master use committee, unfortunately they have their meeting the same time as we did tonight. So that's why Danielle, I both gotta go, but we can't go if we have to be here.
I did get a quick message from Abby that it was gonna be very, very brief and not worry about missing it, because I had said I'll dial in, you know, 7 o'clock, and she said, just don't worry about it. We'll go to the...
Got an update minutes from everything, so it's, they're moving along in that direction with the fire, fire department and everything else, so. I have a question, you know, when did design consultants become G2?
Oh, six months ago maybe, maybe more. You know, I think it was about a year ago, but they didn't change all of their, you know, email and everything.
For a long time, we still got design consultants.
Right. A G2 company, yeah, now they're fully part of G2, yeah.
But is, did they, did they absorb design consultants?
I think so, yeah.
They look like to be a much bigger operation, having a place in Rhode Island, Connecticut.
Yeah.
So, well, it begs the question as far as contracts go, is that contract signable?
So we don't actually have a contract, we just per project, we have them give us a scope and contract with a quote, and we contract every project separately, so, and we can do that with any consultant.
Yeah, okay. So if I remember, we have a hearing, stuff on that, we haven't done that in a long time, so.
Oh, you mean on our choice of peer reviewers? Yeah!
Have proposals, we got proposals from, you know, not from engineering firms. And then we went through the proposals and they came and pitched, you know, we picked something that we liked and they came in and pitched to us.
Do you want to do that again?
Well, I guess one of the reasons that we started looking around was because we had a different company, we were becoming unhappy with their, with their performance.
Yeah.
And that's why we said, okay, and we did have a contract with them. And so once that came to an end and it was time to renew, that's when we went out to bid and started looking at, looking around and ended up with design consultants.
Yeah, you know, at one point, they had a three-year contract and then another one, and as it was expiring a few years ago, I remember discussing with town council and they said, you know, you don't have to do that, you can just do it per project and you can pick any consultant you want, but if you'd rather have a more formal process where we have one person and we put it out again, I, you know, let me know, you know, we can...
Well, I think it's all, I think the proof is in the pudding, are we getting good, are we getting the service and the response and the technical backup that we need, and if we are, no change, you know, no real reason to change, but we just have to make sure that, that that's what we're getting.
I mean, I do feel as though David's in town a lot. I mean, when I ask him to check something out, it's usually that day or the next day.
He's, he's, that's one thing about Dave, he's committed to it, he grew up here, right?
Yeah.
So he doesn't have any super ties to it, he doesn't have ties to it anymore because his father's passed, but he, he has, he still has ties here because this is his, this is his town.
Well, his brother still lives over there.
Oh, does he?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. But, you know, he feels like it's, he feels like he's connected here.
Well, he is.
He tries to take care of him. He tries to make sure that people stay within the bounds.
Yeah, I think we probably do get a little closer attention than perhaps some of the others would because of them too. But by the same token, I, you know, I'm suddenly realizing that we have a different name on there and not having been, knowing that when the change happened, I was a little, you know, concerned that we, that we had, somebody had bought out the contract and we weren't where we were supposed to be. And the other, and the other concern is, of course, pricing, as, you know, if the G2 company is billing him at a different rate than what we were getting billed from design consultants.
I mean, I can ask for a schedule of their pricing, I mean, in terms of the staff people, he has, seems to have had all the same people, I mean, his assistant didn't change, you know, some of the engineers under him didn't change, some of them turned over because the job market, just the way it is now, they've had to hire a lot of people.
Well, it seems to me that, that he probably has access to a larger pool of people, which may be helpful as well.
It may be, yeah. I mean, I can ask him for a schedule of, of pricing, although actually, I think we could probably see that from his bills, because it, it has the hourly rate for each of them.
Well, that's okay.
We need today electronics.
Yeah, I know.
Someone's free, he can send it to them, as long as they can build a state, state law here. They can, they can review it, you know, let you review it.
It takes a sharp eye sometimes.
It does.
And I, and I, and I, thinking of a particular project where the eye wasn't sharp enough and we've got issues.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
So it's just a thought.
You know, I think at that time, his previous partner at DCI was in charge of the reviews and I think that that was an issue with that particular reviewer and he isn't with him anymore.
Right, right.
So, I mean, for, but that's, you know, I don't know, it's just my opinion about it.
All right, okay, well, if you have nothing else, then I guess we can adjourn tonight's meeting?
Okay, and then our next meeting will be June 7th, yes, June 7th. And I did just want to mention, I've realized, you know, for some of, some of the, I'm sorry?
I'm just making sure, Rich.
Oh, yeah.
Just like, is the chair a little long, just one minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Put it back.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, just with regard to schedule, I realized that I, you know, kind of take for granted, we're, some members have been around forever and just realize the way we do things, you know, in terms of any off weeks, like generally, we just will schedule first and third Tuesday and we'll never just throw in a, a second or a fourth week without just checking with everyone first, so I, and I'll, I'll communicate that to Ryan too, because I, I realized that that was just sort of like a given that, you know, some of us know about, but I just wanted to mention that, you know, if there's ever an off date, that's not a first or third, we will definitely check with you before we, you know, assume that there's gonna be a meeting scheduled, so I just wanted to mention that, that's all.
Just a quick request. Did you go over the line? Oh, yeah, sure. Rich Mulder, 57 likes, I don't know where. Poor Warren and David haven't listened to me yet, you know, the candidate forums repeat the same story over and over again. But it does come down to CPC, at one point we were talking about ADU policy and I haven't heard that in a long time, so I'm asking for the very reasons that, you know, I'm always advocating for keeping our seniors in town, making it affordable, property taxes are an issue, housing costs continue to go up, if we can revisit that policy, you know, and I know that there was some logjam. And so I would even encourage, you know, if we have, if we have like agreed to stuff, you know, put that on one side, and then if we have things that require discussion, you know, I'm not in charge of the agenda of the select board, but I think the select board would welcome the visit to say, you know, this is what we have so far and these are things that maybe we can discuss with you. But I think that assessing dwelling unit policy is very important in town. And it's, it's one of the, it's one of the, I don't want to say it's easy, because it's not easy to get the policy done, but it's one of the easiest things we can do to help address this issue right now while we wait for longer-term solutions, so.
So just recently, a day or so ago, I heard on news that the federal government is talking about beginning to put pressure on the states, to put pressure on the towns, to modify their zoning to allow for more building and for more density in the areas because there's such a shortage of housing and the cost of housing has exceeded most people's ability to pay and that don't already have house. And so the net result is that, I know this state, we already have this MBTA thing coming down, you know, I mean, that was, but they're gonna get even more pressure to push against us as far as how our zoning and everything works, so. And I don't, they didn't, they were mostly talking about the, the building of new housing, not, and, and not necessarily about, you know, modifying existing housing. I would not be in, until, until I heard from the, from the select board that they really were interested in having a discussion on this, because when we last talked about it, they were gonna give us some time and that was a year ago. Not really, it didn't seem to be something that was on there, you know, something that they had any real interest in. And so I would, I would certainly, I would certainly like to have that conversation and find out if they got, if they have issues, what they are, just to give us a chance to work on, because basically, we started this ADU project because the, the building inspector was having issues and he asked for help. And so we said, okay, well, you know, we'll try to help, and then we just really didn't get the response that we had anticipated and neither did he, and so we kind of dropped it. It's gotta be something that, it's gotta be something that we all talk about, that we all work on together, not, you know, you know, we can't just do it in the vacuum here because that didn't work.
Yeah, so I, I'll do this, because the world has changed a little bit, you know, there was that presentation in the fall, the select board recognized that we needed to do more, so that's why we hired that new position in public service. You know, there was that presentation in the fall, the select board recognized that we need to do more, so that's why we hired that new position, public services director. And that's actually, it sounds like it's a hire in a week or two, is what I heard. And that public services director is intended to bring together all the social services in town, youth services, parks and rec, library, all those types of things, elder services, things like that. But at the next board meeting, I will, during our board reports, I'll let them know that if we, you know, does the select board want to readdress this issue and bring it forward as more of a compelling issue? When I've discussed it with them informally, I've never asked them, I didn't realize we had given that indication. They were in support of trying to do more for the people in town, this being one of those policies, so they keep talking about this. But I'd be happy to actually get.
Two parts in there, though, Rich, it's a true part, and the second part of this is the affordable housing overlay district that we, that, that we have, where we tried to get some houses built and basically got shut down. So again, that's another, you know, we've done a lot for housing, a lot, you know, we've developed housing plans, we've done all kinds of things. But until the select board says, okay, we know, we'll support some of these things, for us to bring it to them, knowing that they're just gonna say no, is, doesn't make any sense.
I agree, okay, so I'll bring both issues to their attention.
And now those two issues are connected, that's, those aren't our two separate issues.
Right, I don't disagree.
So, so they need to come, they need to come together.
Okay.
And we need to have that discussion with them so that we can bring something to them that's acceptable to them and to the whole town. I mean, that's, that was, that was our goal in the beginning.
Yeah.
So.
But I can say something too, is another thing we need is a little bit more clarity from our council, as well as our building inspector, on what their findings have been in the last two years or reports, have been what is legal and what's illegal, mainly what's legal. And what we, what I, what I've kind of pumped the brakes for, Rich, is that more and more, when we, when we find out we can do this, it's like, oh, they, there's no law stopping them from doing that. The more we talk to the building inspector and then the legal opinions from our council would say, no, we can't stop them from doing that, we can't stop them from doing that. So I'm opposed to drafting bylaws that are illegal, you know, you need that are basically not enforceable by Massachusetts law. So it might feel great, we created ADUs, but like, if there's still, we, if we were never able to enforce them being built in the first place, what are we actually accomplishing? So I know it's not that broad, but I know there's, there's a lot of things that get brought up as examples that anyone could do right now and pull a permit with Mr. Noel and build, and he can't stop them. So us, by law, so by us putting a bylaw that says you can't do that, or you can, what, I, I, that's the part I'm struggling with. Like, why create a bylaw that is against the law? Or one that just agrees with what you can already do, like, you're allowed to drive your car. So we're gonna create a bylaw that says you're allowed to drive your car. Like, we don't need to state something that we, that, that residents of Massachusetts can already do by right. And that's what I'm struggling with. And so it needs to be defined, because it's, they're talking out of both sides. Every time we hear from the building inspector, whatever, I'm not getting a crystal clear message of what's, what exactly is it? So if you come to us and say, I'm having trouble, and that's where they initially came to us. But then after we started to explore with council, what's, what we're capable of stopping, or allowing, during almost every example that Mr. Noel brought up, it, it, we weren't capable of stopping it. If we even put a bylaw in place, they'd be like, sorry, that's illegal. So I just, that's the part I'm struggling with.
Yeah.
But I still, I still, I wonder, no, I'm, I'm probably the only one, you know, that's maybe in opposition, but I am open to it. I just, I don't wanna do an exercise that is in the face of Massachusetts general law.
Yeah.
It's just, I know all committees have them, but I just.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just gonna bring that.
But they have them, and then so kind of, are they just a few?
Good.
You know, because if they're illegal.
Well, I'm just, I'm just gonna ask, are, is it basically all the committees have created their, their rules, basically violate state law?
Well, they can't be bylaws, because that goes through the AG.
Yeah.
Can I explain the difference? I'm sorry, can I just explain the difference? Okay, so there's a, there's one thing that's allowed and there's one thing that's not allowed. Okay, so what an ADU bylaw would legalize would be having a full separate unit that doesn't have an open, um, open free access between the main house and the accessory house.
Right.
Right now, you're not allowed to build that here, you have to have it open. An ADU bylaw would legally enable us to have a house put on a unit that is closed off and has entirely separate entrances and exits and no free access within the building. That's the only thing it would do, and the reason to do that.
Well, actually, that's not the only thing.
Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say it's the only thing.
It would legitimize a lot of the stuff that's being, that's already been done.
Right.
And it would also provide the fire department with a much better idea of how many people there might be in a building if they come to a fire. I mean, there are a lot of positives to it, but I think you're oversimplifying.
Well, not oversimplifying, I think our, our draft goes beyond what Danielle just said, though. Our, so I mean, if you wanna start from somewhere and then having a draft that does more than what that ADU description.
We started with the bylaw that had passed muster.
Passed whose muster?
Well, it came from Reading, so, so obviously.
Well, I mean, I would not, my goal is not to make North Reading, Reading, you know, it's on the CPC.
No, I see what you mean, so they.
And the other, the other part of it.
It was legal with the guys in the AG.
Well, I mean, there's one, there's, there's an ADU bylaw in all, most of these towns.
So we could, so we could certainly do that, but one, but another one of the very important things that it does, and, and, and which is not so, which, which isn't so relevant in towns like Reading or Wakefield or some of these other locations, is it requires that the board of health look at it and make sure that the septic system's adequate to the additional people that are gonna be in that house. Now, and that's, and that's, you know, people don't necessarily know that that's, that that's important until it becomes a problem.
Again, you're just using example, all four examples that make sense, but that's another example where Jerry, if a person's adding a bedroom or adding, say, really fixtures, they're able, he's able to say, do you have, go to the board of health, you have a capacity, you have a septic system, you've exceeded it. That's just normal building, so it's not, has nothing to do with ADU.
But if they could do it by right, if you, if what you were saying, if they could just do it by right, which is what you're, what you're bringing forth here.
No, I mean.
Then, then, then what's gonna happen is they're not gonna do that. They're never, and, and then when the problem comes up, they're gonna say, and we already have an example many years ago where somebody let, 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 uh, building inspector, everything, let something go because, you know, hey, it could be, it could be okay, and the next thing you know, it would be sued. So not us, but the town.
Right, yeah.
But, but again, but that's because they didn't follow the rules, even though they existed, so, because they said, oh, you can just do it by right, by right, so. So some level of an ADU bylaw is necessary. Your points are well taken, they could do quite a bit without it, but with it, that, that legitimizes somewhat they're doing, so that there's a record of it, so that there's inspections on some of these things that wouldn't get inspected otherwise. I think just makes, makes a, makes sense. And I agree that there's, that there's, that has to, it doesn't have to be such a heavy-handed law.
I agree.
But I think it has to have.
ADU by.
Yeah, well, maybe so, but it has to have some of the really important items that, that for inspections are all required. But we're giving something back to them, letting them close a section completely off and, and, and making sure that they don't do something to hurt themselves. I mean, that's really part of the.
Or others.
Yeah, or, yeah, that's part of the, part of the process. So, so again, so let's draft something up. I mean, I, I like your ideas, but let's draft something up that, that covers the bases that we know need to be covered and don't, and isn't onerous, and, and then maybe we make that to the select board.
What I just said is the chairman is just, if we're gonna do that, can we have either council present or, or things like that that are actually can speak to?
I think after we draw it up, because I think we, I think sitting here, we have a pretty good idea of what we wanna do.
You let them read it and they put their.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know what's a lot of.
It's okay, we're not, I, again, I don't.
I'm an attorney and I don't know what's a lot of. But I just need.
Right, and you don't work in that, right? You're in a different part of the world.
It's more just, we just kept getting.
Just be honest.
The goal pulse kept moving.
Yeah.
Every time there was something, and that's all I'm saying, so that was frustrating for my, because.
I agree with you.
You came to, it first started, it came to us for help to prevent people from doing X, Y, Z with the thought of maybe, perhaps, allowing some things. But the, the things that, to help prevent, there, we, he never really needed help to like prevent, because they're, by law, they're allowed. So I just was, I've been struggling with that, like, how are we gonna create something that legally, any attorneys?
So the pushback, the pushback on this is gonna be, is gonna be from a lot of, a lot of the high-end houses, where they don't want their neighbor to have a two-family. That's where the pushback will come from.
Yeah, I just think we need to be honest with all the residents that, you know. The hard thing for me from this is that after the Habitat situation, it doesn't feel like there's a lot of political bill on this level.
You're right.
And so if it feels uncomfortable for us, they ask to come up with a solution, if we're gonna take another idea like Habitat and just get kinda surprised at the, at the, at the negative feedback from this select board on what I frankly think was. That, that was a slam dunk, easy decision.
Even the, even the house, the, the guy wanted the house.
Yeah.
And they said no.
And Fincom even liked it.
Yeah, everybody liked it, except for the select board.
And this is a much bigger political potato than that is, so.
Yeah.
So that almost felt like, until the select board tells us what they want, how are we supposed to come up with? But that's, and that's fair, and I, and I agree, and so I was hundred percent supportive, and I just wonder, I might be hesitant on ADU, but, but I, I think though, I think we do need to come up with something that we think we can get through the select board, if that's gonna be what we're doing.
I think.
I mean, that's the point, is I think we have to be realistic, because what we are doing can dramatically change the town as far as look. And it'll actually impact, not the nice neighborhoods with the big one acre plus lots, it's gonna actually impact the smaller lots. If you, and I don't wanna discriminate, like, I think everyone should be able to do it, so it's not, we're not gonna just have this be people with the one acre lots. But when you get tighter in there in those twelve thousand, fifteen thousand square foot lots, and you're allowing people to kind of max out, and they pave the entire front yard, and there's five cars, six cars, it changes the look of a neighborhood that used to have just a garage and a house and have that beautiful feel to it, tight, you know, you, what you like.
That's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons that Reading put, that's one of the reasons that Reading put.
I would not use Reading's ADU. The more you read through it, and the more you drive through Reading, I'm sorry, that's not what I want my town to look like.
It's one of the reasons that the towns that do have these kind of bylaws put size, some sizes in there. So if you can't put that size in, you can't do it. So to prevent from.
And I've read that from the different ones I've looked at. And I think that should be on the table.
So, so the other, but the other part of it is, in this town, is that you still have that septic system issue where you need.
Right.
You need a thousand square feet someplace.
Yeah.
To put a, you know, you know, I mean, eight hundred square foot field, thousand square foot fields, you got four bedrooms, you know, you need a big piece of land just for the septic system, so.
Right.
So, so it's, some of it will be self-solving.
And so.
But if it's in the, if it's in the proposals, they don't have to get as far as the building inspector or the health inspector, they'll see it right away, oh, I gotta increase my septic system size.
Yeah.
And they'll stop them right there.
So we don't, so we.
So they don't waste any, they don't waste any money.
That's my worry too, is, it's very, you know, it's very, we, we can draft something up, but it's very expensive for seniors to put one of these into their homes, especially if they're faced with, I have a small lot and I wanna add one, and oh, now I need, I need to upgrade my septic system. And that's what I'm afraid of, they really lend themselves, and all the ones that I've seen in town built are mainly people, very much the one to five percenters.
Oh, yeah.
Of this town are the ones that are all building them. And so it's kind of, it's really quite regressive, right, in the sense where.
Most of them are built in.
Did we do what we're helping them make, now make their home have a, if you will, multi-family, I don't care what you call it, but it's now, now this house worth more, they can flip it and sell it, and then those two families living in it, or whatever, depending on the size. And some of these, because they are illegal, are pretty good sized.
I think the majority of them are being done to accommodate family members.
I agree, Warren, but I'm just saying, most of them are done in the higher end.
Keeping your family unit together is not a bad thing.
And to your point though on that, though, I mean, if you're a senior family and you wanna stay in your home and you wanna make some changes, either have caregivers able to stay with you, how do we set up these rules? And also, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm talking without the experience here, so please correct me if I'm wrong. I'm imagining that if you wanna get a loan on those kind of things, the restrictions on what you can do with that property are gonna impact the kind of loans you're gonna get.
Right.
So if we put overly restrictive rules around these, it's gonna make it more difficult for a senior family.
Yeah, but I don't think we need, I don't think we need to put overly, I mean, I'm agreeing with Dave on a lot of this.
Well, overly too.
I don't think we need to overly, make it overly restrictive, we just have to make it rational, so that we protect people from doing something that they probably shouldn't do, you know, which is, I mean, you know, because by right, so they go and they add all the stuff on and they, and they add a family member and they add a bedroom on, and before you know it, they got troubles. And they're like, why didn't you let me do this, you know?
They have a site backyard and, you know.
So just, just a simple, a simple ADU law that gives, that, that, that makes sure that some boxes are checked, but by the same token, gives them the right to close that part all the way off, I think that's workable.
And if it's successful, you, you can expand it a little bit, that's the whole point, like, I just found that the original, the first draft was like, you know, detached and everything, it's like, are you guys really serious about getting this through?
Okay, so let's, so let's leave it like this, let's leave it like this with Rich.
Yeah.
If they're, you know, we'll, we'll, if, if you come back and tell us, yeah, they're, they're willing to sit with you and, and, and go over something.
Or come to us.
Then why don't we, or, yeah, either way, or come to us, then we'll try to, you know, work together, try to put together some kind of a, a very basic, with the things that we know we need, and maybe a list of things we don't need in this bylaw, and, and then see if we can, and bring that to them and see what they, what they say.
Yeah, they might knock a few off or introduce a few things, yeah. Probably what would work best is because.
But we're going too far in this meeting, because if Barbara walked, if she, not here anymore, but she walked in that door, she chastised you. We've gone almost a half an hour talking about something that is not on the agenda at all.
Okay.
You know, and you're getting into the design development.
That's true, so, so we'll just all agree, so it's more, can we, can we get back in, onto this discussion, which is what Mr. Wallace requires.
I think as long as we get the backing of the select board, and that we don't go in there blind like we've gone in the past.
Point, Mr. Hayden.
So I, I'd be happy to, I, what I would ask for is the latest, whatever be after the ADU, I wouldn't hand that out to them, I just want to briefly, like, whatever the latest information is, this has been a long time since I thought about it.
Yes.
And same for the housing overlay, whatever, maybe the last, whatever you presented at the last meeting, because I understand where that, where that came from as well.
Yeah, we don't know where, we don't know where the Habitat people might have gone, who knows, the town said, well, look at these guys.
They'll always be interested.
Yeah, they are.
Especially in that St. Teresa property, they really want that. In fact, they check in every so often, and I always say, you know, be patient, we'll keep it up, just.
It doesn't make any sense that they said no to this stuff.
Yeah.
I'm happy to go back now.
The select board, the select board is supposed to live on what's happened prior to that. And we've got a unanimous support of the select board and town meeting to make this overlay, and they shot it down. Five people who weren't even around shot it down, or four, at least four people, I don't know what your idea was, Rich, but, so I didn't wanna put words in your mouth, because I.
That's okay. Yeah.
It, it just, it made no sense to us, and nobody told us upfront.
Yeah, okay, well, again, so if you can, whatever, even if it's just the slides from that, that meeting, that would be fine?
Yeah, I'll send you the latest.
I just, you know, the select board should be behind making progress, even if we can't agree with that progress.
Yeah, no.
We should be behind making progress.
You know, the whole thing was, they wanna write something, rules, to do this.
Yeah, no, what he said was, they wanna set up, see, establish a policy.
Policy.
We tried to tell them that the policy was in the bylaw they approved in two thousand eight.
Right, and they could have also let this go.
Policy was already there.
And then held, held, selling the property, because it was still in select board's jurisdiction, to release the property, to make the policy at that point.
Yeah.
But they didn't wanna do anything.
Yeah.
You know, it was like, just shut them down. It was kind of embarrassing for us.
All right, so anything you can briefly with that would be great, and then I'll be happy to try to revive it, and before you spend a lot of time or do anything that you think is a waste of time, I'll do what I can to try to get some consensus, so that, you know, I, I think there's support there, but.
We don't think it's a waste of time, if we've got backing, that's, that's.
I'm trying to.
No, no, I understand what you're saying, I'm just, just kinda saying it a little differently.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah.
All right, so I'm now gonna withdraw to keep us from getting into more trouble.
Let's get, yeah, let's get out of trouble.
Feel further trouble.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, thank you, Phil.